Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the City Council's study session for March the 5th. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and provide direction on the sale of city-owned properties through an online auction process and proposing the properties located at the northwest corner of Adobe and Recker Roads and the northwest corner of McDowell Road and 92nd Street be used as a pilot in the online auction process. Well, thank you. Good to have our real estate department with us today. Kim, looking forward to hearing about this idea.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Kim Falbeck. I'm the city's Real Estate Services Administrator. I'm here this morning to discuss piloting an online auction process for the sale of city property. Here with me is Scott Patterson with Easy Buy and Matt Bauer, our city's procurement administrator, that will help me answer any questions that you may have on this process. We reached out to other local agencies to see how they were handling their sale of their properties, and we found that they were using some of the same methods as we are. City policy allows four different methods to sell properties. It includes using a real estate broker, which we used for the land sale of our Pinal County property. Seal bids, we have not used this process recently. Request for Proposals, we used this process when we did the Riverview at, Union at Riverview Development. And the public auction, we used that for the Thomas and Recker land sale. Today, we want to share with you an online auction process. As with many things, technology is changing. Last year, we had success with a live auction, in-person live auction for Thomas and Recker land sale. This worked well. This was one of the city's largest parcel property. However, the city has some smaller parcels that the online auction process may be more economical to sell these smaller parcels. It also offers more convenience in that the bidder can be online in their office, they can be out of state, and they don't have to have to come in person to designate a location to bid. The city's purchasing department has been using online auctions for purchases of materials. These auctions are conducted as a reverse auction with the lowest bid winning. The online auction process for seller property would be similar, but would be a forward auction. We're looking for the highest price winning. For this process, Easy Buy would build a bid platform that would provide the information about the parcels the city's interested in selling. They would conduct training to manage the online auction, and they also would do outreach to the broker community and let them know that these properties Mesa's considering selling and provide them the link to the auction information. With this outreach and the city's current process of posting the property 10 days prior to the auction date, we also mail out letters to those adjacent property owners 150 feet from the site, as well as advertising the newspaper over a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This is a diverse outreach to attract the potential bidders, and our goal is to bring as many bidders to the online auction event. The city would also provide the minimum starting price and set what the bidding increments would be. Each bidder would be required to deposit a cashier or bring a cashier's check and an bidder's affidavit to qualify them to be a qualified bidder. Once the auction opens, Easy Buy monitors the auction, assisting bidders and making sure the auction platform is running smoothly. They can make live auction adjustments if there appears to be any technical issues. Here's a screenshot of what the bidder platform will look like. The platform will show the set opening amount, bid increments, auction start time, and any overtime periods. Each bidder will know their price, rank, and lead bidder amount. This platform is very dynamic, and Easy Buy can configure it to accommodate the city's goals. Here is general area of the two vacant properties we have received interest on recently. They are located at the northwest corner of Adobe and Recker and the northwest corner of McDowell and 92nd Street. For the McDowell and 92nd Street, as of yesterday, we were contacted by Maricopa County. They have a 12-acre parcel on the east side of 92nd Street that they have found access issues. So, we will work with them. We recommend not moving forward on this site at this time until Maricopa County resolves that issue, and we're working with them. They anticipate three to six months to resolve it. The McDowell and 92nd site was originally acquired for a joint flood control retention basin and Maricopa County Flood, with Maricopa County Flood Control District. This basin is no longer needed for flood control purposes. Flood Control purchased the adjacent property to the west of the city's parcel for half of the basin. They recently have sold this parcel. Here are closer views of the proposed sites with additional history and details on each property. The Adobe Recker site was purchased in 1988 for a fire station. The city paid $45,000 for 2.1 acres. McDowell and 92nd Street was acquired in 2002 for a joint project with Flood Control District. The city paid $125,000 for 1.3 acres. Both properties are now considered access properties. The city has been contacted by eight interested parties for the Adobe and Recker parcel and three interested parties for the McDowell and 92nd Street parcel. An appraisal was obtained for the Adobe Recker parcel in the amount of $485,000, and the Flood Control District had their parcel recently appraised that they recently sold, and it appraised for $143,000. We have not obtained an appraisal for our parcel. Our parcel's like identical to theirs, and they have a recent appraisal, so that was our thoughts of using that appraised amount. It's similar in size and location. Should you direct us to move forward with this process? We would bring forward a resolution authorizing us to sell these properties. That could be done in the next few weeks, and we could do as soon as an April auction. So, if you have any questions, how does it work?
And then, can we, these are just kind of to start off with, but we have other properties that kind of after we go through this process and try it out, then if it's successful and council's comfortable with it, then we'd come back probably with other smaller parcels like this. So, anyway, this is just the beginning. It's not, process is just for these two. There's others behind this, but we just wanted to start off a few at the beginning.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Mr. Freeman?
Kim, what's the zoning on these parcels now? I mean, if interested buyers are wanting to buy them, they would perhaps rezone them potentially, and would we run in?
So, definitely the Adobe Recker parcel would need to be rezoned. Developers are looking for higher density. This is in an older area. Mesa already built out with larger lots, so we anticipate that this parcel would need to be rezoned. The McDowell and 92nd Street parcel is also zoned residential, and it is in county. It's located in the county district.
So, it's like R-43 or whatever suburban ranch right now?
I think it's RS, I'm not, it's less than R-43, I think.
Okay.
R-135?
Yeah. RS-7 is Adobe Recker, and R-135 is McDowell and 92nd.
Mr. Luna?
Kim, is this part of Altamasa?
I believe so, yes.
I wonder whether they didn't build any homes there?
Well, so, city originally owned north of this corner, and when the developer came in to build that subdivision, they asked if we would swap. So, we would be on the corner, and they built a cul-de-sac where we used to be.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Have you been building this property how long since?
1988.
We've had it for a while, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. It seems like there's really two questions. Should we sell these two pieces of property, and should we use this process to sell these two pieces of property? So, I defer to you on that it's a good idea to sell this property. Are we always either buying or selling property? And I know we don't do foolish things like sell property and then turn around and buy something close by a few years later. So, I assume we've gone through the scrutiny of convincing ourselves that there is not, that we don't need a well site, or where there's not, you know, something else that we could possibly do with these properties.
Correct. And Mayor, I think on the fire station site, that kind of falls into the analysis that we've done with our data scientists and looking at where we need fire stations in there. We've gone through that exercise, and this site eventually fell out as one that we didn't need, and so...
Yeah, I know. We recently went through that process, and I was impressed with the way we decided the police, or the fire and police stations we're pursuing now. And I know we had a great experience with the Thomas and Recker auction process, so I share the enthusiasm for maybe looking at this as a way to effectively market this property. And if we already have eight people or eight entities that have expressed interest in Adobe and Recker, I'm optimistic we'll have a competitive bid. But as you described, the process of working with this online company, that too sounds like it is a way to maybe even do this better than we did last time. The idea that you post it 10 days prior, you advertise in the newspaper, you send something out to the neighbors, that seems a little, and I'm a little underwhelmed with the marketing, you know, of that piece of property, because I'm just concerned. Well, I mean, I know in this case, we have eight people that are clamoring to buy it, but is there, I could still see the possibility that there's interested buyers that this is below the radar if we just do those few, a few things.
So, Easy Buy, part of their help to us doing this online auction, will reach out to the broker community, and maybe Scott can elaborate a little bit more on what he would do to help market this.
Great, thank you. That's my question.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council, thanks for having me here. So, part of our service offering is we want to motivate as many buyers as possible to gain access to the properties that the city is looking to get rid of. So, we have already identified a number of brokers, not only here within the Phoenix metropolitan area, but as well as outside of this area, so that we will blast out notifications to them to come to the site, look at the opportunity to purchase these properties, and give reports back to Kim on who's interested and how we're doing in motivating, driving suppliers, or excuse me, buyers to look at purchasing this property.
Okay, so, the property's not listed for sale, or maybe it is, I mean, if we're engaging with brokers, well, I mean, well, either today or prior to the, to the auction.
It will be, yeah. We'll get it, it'll be listed out there, so everybody give a chance.
So, that's why a broker would be engaged at all if it wasn't listed.
So, we will put out on a website the auction information. Again, we would reach out to developers, brokers, everybody let them know the property is. It's amazing how quickly you tell one, they all seem to find out.
But, Mayor, you're bringing up an interesting point. Sometimes we've struggled with us using brokers and paying those fees, and it's Kim doing all the work.
Yeah.
So, you know, so, I think the steps we gave you at the beginning, those are the minimum required that we have to do today regardless, is our policy. The notifying the adjacent property owners, posting it in the paper, we have to do that regardless. So, what we're saying is, we're going to do that minimum, but we're going to go supersize it with bringing on the online services. We think we can, through, you know, digital means, we can get a much broader reach than we can. And we're hoping, while Thomas and Recker was very successful for us, as council knows, we only had two groups sitting there. We're pleased that they were both highly motivated to acquire the property, but frankly, the more the merrier we want to bring to the party, so...
Yeah, if one of the two had not shown up, it would have been a very different outcome. Yeah. Okay, so, I guess I'm still struggling to, why would a broker? I think if, when you're listed, then the whole brokerage community knows about it, right? And I just want to make sure that when we do this, the same thing happens. All the sophisticated, you know, smart people that are out buying property will know about this, and they won't go, oh dang, you know, I wish I would have known, I would have bid on this. So, how, if it's not listed, how does the entire brokerage community get notice of this?
Sure.
So, Mayor and City Council, so, the way that we work with this is we focus source every single opportunity, so we're identifying as many potential buyers as possible, sending them out notifications, you know. The way that we're going to be successful on this is having visibility into how to gain access to this and making sure that we are driving as many possible buyers to look at these, to look at these properties. So, that's, we will make phone calls, send notifications out, make sure that there is as much visibility as possible around these things.
Okay.
So, not just, I'm sorry, not just broker community, but we'll be looking at a broad range of potential buyers here.
All right. And I know you, to be, you make more money the more money we make, I assume. Is this a commission, or is it a plus?
No.
It's the $2,000, okay.
It's floppy, yeah. It's just part of the service offering that we provide the city with our current contract.
Okay. Well, in this particular property, I'm not concerned. It sounds like there's, people are already clamoring to buy it, but just, I'm still not quite grasping how we get blanket, we blanket the entire real estate community by giving you $2,000 to go advertise, you know, sit down and scratch your head and think, who are all the people that I likely want to bid on this property? But I'm not worried about this particular piece, but I just don't know, it's not obvious to me that this is a better way to market property than listing it. So, I need someone to help me understand.
Oh, say, listing it like on, what is it, MLS or something like that, if you're asking?
Yeah, yeah. I think there is a, property gets sold for the highest price around here as a general rule, because it's competitive, and because you list it with a broker, and other brokers know about it, and that over the course of time, anybody who's likely interested is marketed. This seems like it's kind of quick and intense, and if it's a, maybe people are talking in the real estate community amongst themselves, and they're, you know, this is, this is big news, and everyone will show up. So, I think this will go well, but still, I'm...
Mayor, just think about it, even today, all the groups that are popping up that are different than going through, your traditional real estate broker is doing things online, listing it differently. I think the world is, I don't know that, I mean, I think you're right, that's still the dominant, but it's not, I think we're finding way, that people are looking for other ways to be aware of, just listing homes, how you list a home. I mean, they're popping up every month, it seems like, a different group, so. And that's why we started small, let's see what the response is, let's see if the outreach through the means that we have here, we can do it and be successful. And it may not apply, we may not be able to use this model for every single property. Obviously, we have a few other larger, maybe more sophisticated ones, but we want to try it. Auction worked well, but again, we only had two people show up, and so, we were, you know, it was good, and it kind of sent, you know, made us concerned at the same time, so...
And I know there's some, there's a floor established here, right?
Yes.
We don't, there's a minimum bid that is the appraised value, so we can avoid a...
Yeah, we can always withdraw. We can, we can turn this thing off if we don't like what the outcome is.
I just, having sat on this council, I remember years ago, we sold a piece, and we had a very angry person who was the adjacent property owner, who was, wanted to buy that piece for years and years, and somehow didn't know that it was being sold, ended up later being the mayor of Mesa. I mean, it was, sometimes, this happens, right? I mean, people don't know the property's getting sold, and so, I just, there's probably no way to absolutely avoid that from happening.
Yeah, the property will have a sign posted on it.
Yeah, okay.
Signs on the digital outreach, yeah.
Signs work too, I guess. All right. I'm sorry, Jeremy?
Sorry, I thought you were going to call Frankie. I had a couple of questions on this.
Should we go with Frankie first?
Yeah, go ahead, let me put my thoughts together. So, my question is, just online, the online option, what's the experience on getting the value of the property? When I think of online bid auctions, I think like people like lowering their bids, or like at the end, there's a rush, but you don't, I don't know if you get the value of other options out there of getting, you know, the maximum price for this type of opportunity? So, I don't know if there's any data or information on, you know, the online bid option for this, if it's, you get value in return?
Can I just answer real quickly? One of the reasons we did the auction last time is because what we've learned from the sealed bid process, which is what the method was before, is that, you know, you're trying to guess what everybody else is going to do and get your best. And so, what this does is very transparent, right? Everybody can see the pricing out there. So, if you put in your first bid, and you're, but you're holding back, and, you know, you think, okay, I'm going to put in this bid, someone comes in $100 more, you wouldn't know that through a sealed bid process. You could lose out on $100, $1,000, whatever. This allows for the competition, and we think that is healthy for us, and we think it makes it much more transparent, so people can't question something we might have done or who we did the deal with. It's all out there, it's all visible for everybody to see. And so, in some ways, we think this is a better, from a public standpoint, it really allows everybody to see the whole iterative process going along, and I think it, it's in our best interest, because even as we do it in reverse, this allows for people to really get, we think we get the maximum value from this process, because everybody is putting in the last, very last dollar that they're willing to pay for it at the end of the day. That's how we, that's the theory we're looking at.
I guess, is maybe a question for you, is, you know, per your, per your experience, is it, do you do get the maximum value as far as what you see in these online bid auctions for these real estate deals, or?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, I pulled up on the screen here what the interface looks like, and the feedback that the buyers get is, one, they have to start their offer at whatever that floor is. So, in this example here, this is set for $15 million, so everyone would have to start there. And then, they, when the event itself starts, so there's, the auction event has a specific start time and an end time with potential overtime period. So, a clock counts down, the buyers get feedback as to where they rank, they can then increase their offer by the minimum bid increment. And then, they get feedback again where they rank, they can make some real-time adjustments to that. So, one, creating transparency to that process, as well as creating additional competition, so that they can make real-time adjustments to that offer. So, if they're, you know, highly motivated to purchase that property, you're going to get the best price possible there. Just as a kind of an FYI, we've been doing thousands and thousands of both forwards and reverse auctions across the country, and have various categories that have been highly successful. So, what we're looking to do, I think what the city's looking to do is have a pilot to show proof of concept here, and then move forward with additional opportunities if they present themselves.
And at the end of the, Mayor and Council, if we don't like the outcome, whatever the final number is, we're not, we can pull back and say that we didn't get the value we were looking for. So, we can always go in with that in mind, and if we're not there, then we just shut it down and don't accept the offers, so...
One other question, that, what's the screening process for folks that they have to have or do to bid on these?
It's the same process that the city goes through now. So, they'd have to go through the affidavit, certified checks, all that sort of qualification stuff is exactly the same.
Okay, all right.
I recently bought a gold line.
I'd be curious just to ask some real estate, big commercial real estate brokers, is this a good idea or a bad idea? I'm sure you have, I mean, that's who you talk to, but it's not clear to me, it seems like a lot of property gets sold for out-of-state users or people that are trying to enter the market, and they're looking for a specific type of piece, for a specific type of use, and they're probably, maybe you've never heard of them before, but when they want to buy a piece of property in Mesa, Arizona, they'll contact a commercial broker, and they say, hey, go out and find X number of acres, you know, this type of, here's the specs I'm looking for. And unless that we're tied into that industry, I mean, I don't know, how does a broker make money through this process? Why would, why would a broker who knows, hey, there's a, there's a company in New York that's looking to buy this exact piece of property, why would they engage in this? Do they earn a commission somehow?
I would think if they bring a buyer to the table, the buyer would pay them the commission to be kind of a finder's sphere, whatever the agreement is with that person. Mayor, I have received over the years, calls on some other properties that the city owns that we're not looking to sell, that we're just holding for future development. Buy brokers saying, I have somebody, they're looking for this type of property, is the city interested in selling? I get calls all the time on Monterey and Power Road. We have a large parcel there, and there's, you know, it's great for residential, but, you know, they, they call me and say, I have somebody interested in buying it, is the city interested in selling? So, I find that brokers, developers, they're looking on aerials, they're looking for any piece of vacant land, and when they find city Mesa owns it, they call and ask if they're willing to sell.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of moving forward and experimenting, but I'm just curious to hear, get the feedback from the brokerage community too, as do they feel like they somehow got excluded in this, and that there was a market that we weren't being exposed to because we weren't using the traditional broker way of doing things? Jeremy?
Yeah, I agree with John, and one other thing that I want to ask is that, I know that I've bid on different properties or things in the past, where they'll also interact with MLS, where they don't necessarily sell the property on MLS, but they list it on MLS. That way, anybody that has like a search query set up in MLS, if it triggers that search query, then they know it hits that MLS, and then there's a link to where they can then go bid on that property. Is that something that we're able to do, so that way we don't, at least we have the exposure of MLS, where the majority of people are searching for investment properties?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I definitely can look into that option.
Okay, that would be one thing that I think at a minimum we should do, is just to make sure that we have that exposure, because I know personally, when I'm looking for an investment property, you have your triggers set up in MLS, right? So, as soon as something triggers over a certain threshold or value amount, you automatically get an alert, and then you can be redirected to that third-party website to come and bid on the property. So, I think that's something that would be essential, and that would also give us the exposure of MLS at the same time. I do have a question on this process versus the Thomas and Recker process that we did in the past. What are the main differences? Is it that the Thomas and Recker started online, but then it became an in-person auction, or what was the, what are the, like, the main differences here?
No, so, the Thomas and Recker, we posted it, we advertised in the paper, we sent letters, and then we had a city website specifically to the land auction for Thomas Recker. With that property, there were already developers interested in it, and the word got out, and so, that, that conversation out there, and knowing that the city was going to sell it, brought those two bidders to the live auction.
But they had to show up physically.
But they had to show up physically.
For the auctions. So, I said, I think that's really the difference, is the execution of the actual bid is, everything up to that point is going to be very similar. We didn't list that on MLS, we didn't do any, we, but, and maybe that's why we only ended up with two, but we had a very competitive, so we went to the execution of the bid. The difference was, we had to have a room, we had to go hire an auctioneer, you know, we had to have that whole process. Here, we want to make it very simple and very transparent, and people can be doing this from anywhere, right? To have access, so...
Yeah, and you were, you had mentioned something that I didn't quite understand. You said something about it being a sealed bid process, so they were like blindly bidding?
Previous, see, that's the challenge with going back to doing it through the brokerage community and doing it the way traditionally is. What you do is, you post it on MLS, you say, on this date, sealed bids are due, and you get a stack, well, we hope, you get a stack of envelopes, you rip them open, and that's your, whatever the highest one is. So, nobody in that grouping has an opportunity to say, oh, if I'd known it was another $1,000, I would have offered $1,500 or whatever. So, this process, we think, works well for us, as well as for those who are interested in the property, because we do think it motivates us, motivates to get to the maximum value for us.
I would agree. And so, what's the total cost of this platform? Is it literally just a $2,000, I think I saw $2,000 somewhere, is it just literally a fixed fee? There's no cost to develop and implement this software, like turnkey, it's just a turnkey piece of software you plug into the website, and it's ready to hit the ground running?
Pretty much, yes.
And the other question I had, have we considered going on the paths? I know that when I'm looking for properties to buy or auction, one of the main, there's two main sites that I'm always looking at, CWS Marketing and Public Surplus, which I think is a large government auction site. Have we considered using those two platforms as well?
I was not aware of them, but I'm writing them down, CWS Surplus and...
CWS Marketing and Public Surplus. I know that those are large government outlets for buying a lot of random things. The other question I had, the signs on the property, so that we don't run into issues where neighbors could put... where neighbors could potentially have wanted to purchase these parcels, I assume we're going to set a threshold of a certain number of days that we'll put signs up on these properties, so everybody that lives in the area at least knows.
We are required, per our management policy, to do 10 days prior, but we will get them up as soon as...
Okay, great.
But Kim, you also said you notify the adjacent property.
We do.
So, I don't know, maybe that came as a result of this previous incident, but we actually notify the adjacent property owners, so they're aware of the opportunity if they want to purchase.
The other question I had is, we talked about one of these properties would potentially need to be rezoned before, or maybe rezoned after it's sold. If we're rezoning properties for like a higher density, my understanding is from the appraisal process, the higher density or different zoning can drastically increase the value of a property, right? So why wouldn't we, unless we can't do this legally, why wouldn't we rezone the properties to the optimal zoning code, and then list them for sale, rather than leave that lower-valued zoning and sell them, and then just rezone them after the purchase them?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, so the appraiser does look at the highest and best use, they reach out to our planning director and kind of get a feel of what might get supported by planning, and then they choose that density. If you go zone it for a specific density, there could be a buyer out there that may want to do something different. As an example, maybe the Adobe Recker might be a medical, you know, little office-type thing versus residential. But, so if you zone it, they may have to rezone it again anyway. It's just not knowing, I know that when talking with planning representatives before, when we've had interested parties on this site, that there will have to be public outreach to the neighborhood to get support for a higher density. This is an older neighborhood, you've got a county area for Dreamland Villa on the east side, larger lots, there is two sides to this parcel that is residential that backs up to it. Maybe Nana can expand on maybe the pros and cons of rezoning a site prior to buying it. I don't...
Well, and I think, Nana, you could help with a question, but I always think when developers are doing that, they're doing on a very large tracts of land, these are pretty small, and with that, we would have to make some, as a local government, we have to, we'd have to almost make some pretty specific assumptions as the specific use, and I just don't know that we have that expertise to know exactly what that is, and then to hope that that is going to be the max, that's going to create the maximum value, but Nana, what's your thoughts?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, that's true. One of the things that we consider whenever we have a rezoning proposal, typically, they also come with a specific development that determines the type of zoning, and it also gives the residents some level of comfort as to what's really going to be developed to get their input or buy-in. So without knowing the kind of intended development on the site, it becomes more of a blanket rezoning, which basically, in a way, most of the time also, there are several uses that could be allowed on the development as a result of the rezoning. So without knowing that specific development, it becomes a bit complex to really rezonate.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess, the way I look at it, if I knew that my personal properties, I had the power to rezone them myself before I listed them for sale, and it could potentially 5X the value of the property, it would seem foolish to me not to consider what the highest and best use is prior to us listing them for sale, especially if the person's going to come back to us and request a rezone, or overrides to our master housing plan, or things don't fit in, if they come in and request things like that, then it, I just think it's an option that we should look at as a template for all properties moving forward, if we're going to consider selling them. My last question is, we said that these two are just test properties, what's the total value of property that we're looking to offload through this platform? Is there like a plan to offload X dollars worth of property over the next six months, a year, or like what?
We kind of do it on a case-by-case basis, there's really not, I mean, we have a variety of properties that we possess, but not, most of them, I mean, there are some larger properties that we're going to look at coming back to council with, whether it's the property at Mervyn's, whether it's the property, what's some other ones, Kim?
So we're, look, we've received inquiries on a lot on Fairway and Alma School Road. It used to be a house, and in 1989, when we widened the Alma School Road, we took what we needed for the road, and then we've just, it's higher up on elevation, so it's, people are attracted to it for view. So that is one that we were looking at doing. Another one was Redberry, it's a 10-acre parcel, it is in the county, it has some challenges with utilities, but that was another one that we...
So it's not a long list, it's just about, it's just a handful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, Council?
I just have one last follow-up, is that eBay is another website that you'll often see large parcels of land sold, that has, you know, millions of visitors every day, so that would be, I don't know what the fee structure looks like, or if you can just do a listing for a flat fee cost, but, so one of the things I just want to reiterate, and what the mayor said, was that I think it's essential that we get a link onto MLS, potentially eBay or some of these other sites, and that would be the only thing that I would ask before we move forward. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so I know that ZenDy has asked for providing direction, I think the consensus here is to proceed, right, with the Adobe and Recker, but again, I think we're all looking at this as an experiment and a learning process, and maybe this is a great method to go forward with. Is that fair, Council? Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
We'll look forward to hearing how this goes. Next item on our agenda is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, what would you like to share with us? Mr. Luna?
Yes, yesterday morning, Chief Kameli presented recognition to Vaughn Dill and Sean Appleby, these two bystanders saved a person's life using CPR at LA Fitness on Power. So we want to thank them for their efforts, and the gentleman is doing very well, so we want to thank him for doing that. On Tuesday evening, I attended the project-based learning over at Falcon Hill, and their focus was on the One Mesa pledge, so, some great ideas, and I'll share them with Council members, and certainly give them to our diversity office. And then also want to congratulate Community Service Department, they moved into a new facilities, it's a nice digs, so congratulations, and it's a great space for them to work with our residents here in the city of Mesa.
Great, thank you. Mr. Freeman?
I'll just do an additional plug, our Lehigh Days Family Dance and Rodeo starts tomorrow, and with rodeo and barbecue on Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you. Jen?
On Tuesday night, I went to Guerrero Elementary School for Dr. Seuss Night, and read four books myself in the library to the audience of kids and families, and there's many activities around there. I was escorted to the library by two things. They really did a phenomenal job in the arts and the activities, and celebrating Dr. Seuss' 119th birthday. Yesterday, the mayor and I toured Alice Cooper's Solid Rock Teen Center in Phoenix, and they'll have a location soon opening here on North Country Club, near Blue Adobe Grill in September, and that's a free after-school teen center that teaches, has classes in exploration of music, and art, and photography, dance, a number of things, and discovery of creativity. So thrilled to have that for our teens after school, we have our great museums and such, but that has always kind of been a hole, so now we have a great place for our teens to hang out after school. Threw up about that. Thank you.
Yeah, amen, the Solid Rock facility was really high, very, very impressive, very high-quality, very high-end, and I'm really excited that they're going to be in West Mesa on Country Club, that's going to be a real great thing for our teens. And I did have the opportunity to help with Dr. Seuss's birthday too, I was at Emerson reading to the third grade, that was a lot of fun, so look forward to that every year. Council, other, anything else you'd like to share with us? Mr. Brady, what does our calendar look like?
We will see you next Thursday morning for a study session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.